And my name.
Yeah.
You are live.
Okay. I call to order the Monday, March twenty fifth, two thousand twenty four, regular board meeting. Roll call, please.
Lizinski.
Here.
You're not.
Here.
Nukin.
Here.
Craft.
Here.
Liam.
There.
Okay, could we all please stand for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge the state of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hey, we have our mission statement, which is we educate for excellence, empowering all students to achieve their educational goals, to direct their lives, and to contribute to society. Our vision statement is the Westlake City School District will provide a dynamic, student-centered learning environment. Our district will be characterized by high achievement, actively engaged learners, mutual respect, shared knowledge, pursuit of new skills and capabilities, collaborative learning, willingness to take action, a team commitment to data-driven continuous improvement through our strategic planning process, and tangible results. Okay, and I've got to get out of here. Back to my. Okay. Where am I on this agenda? I can't do the paper one as easily as this one, but I'm sorry.
Take your time.
Let me get back in here.
And one F.
Okay. Well, welcome all of our visitors, and we're going to do the Bernison Brew.
We got to prove the agenda. Uh, well.
Okay.
Go through.
Madam President, I move to approve the agenda.
Second. Roll call, friends.
Craft, yes. You're not?
Yes.
Fanukin?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Lizinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, now we have our recognition and informative reports, so we will start with, uh, you want to do the introductions?
Sure, absolutely. Um, Mr. Shaw, who are you bringing up first?
Uh, we are going to, um, I don't know if you'd love to present issues. Um, our person brew.
You're gonna start with Bernison Brew? Okay, so we have, uh, Mr. Shaw, who is the principal of Lee Bernison Middle School, and he has, uh, two groups with him this evening. One is our Bernison Brew Crew, um, and also we have a member of our Student Advisory Committee as well, so, um, I know Mr. Shaw has a slide deck put together, so I will turn it over to him, let him take charge.
Okay, well, first of all, thank you for having me. I'm honored to be here. Dr. Dragon said I get forty-five minutes.
Is that all?
We'll be quick. We're gonna go a little out of order here. Um, so, uh, over here, Brian. Um, like to introduce you guys to our person brew, uh, crew here, and, um, Mrs. McQ is their teacher, and she's going to kind of explain a little bit about what they do, but, um, and some of their jobs that they do around the building, but we got a new part this year, and our students are able to, uh, serve our staff coffee, water, uh, pop, AC snacks daily, um, and they all have various jobs. They got a little new career here, so they're looking pretty good. My T-shirt's still on backwards. But, uh, yes, you guys, please, come on up.
So hello.
Hi.
I'm McQ, and as, uh, Mr. Shaw had mentioned, I'm an intervention specialist, but I'm also a co-CEO of the company. Mrs. Goldberg is over here. She's a special education aide, incredible person who wears many jobs, many hats, and she's also a co-CEO. We're here tonight to share about our business that was founded on three principles, to educate for equality, to advocate for, um, inclusion, and also celebrate all ability, which I think we've done an amazing job. Uh, we really play this ranks, and we'll just go ahead and start with each kid's name and what they do.
Awesome.
So, Riddick isn't here tonight, but he actually puts the labels on the, um, on the sleeve, thank you. So he's amazing. He's not here, but Lion is next in our assembly line, and Brian, what's your job?
Shaw.
You put the sleeves on the.
Car.
The sleeves on the cups, and Brian is very meticulous with that.
Bean number.
And we have Sarah over here. Sarah, what's your job? That's right, she comes to the cup, the tea in the cups. And she also just wanted to share the menu that we have this, um, this, yeah. We sell several things. We have a menu for each of you, and we're gonna house for a little bit. Then we have Katie, Katie, go on. She's very busy. Hold on for a second. What's your job?
Me?
Yes.
Right.
You do something with it?
Yeah.
You add a cream dinner?
Mocha.
That's right. Uh, Katie had to match the color and how many she had to put the labels, so break up Katie. And then we have Chris over here. Chris's job, you want to share your job, Chris?
Chris, tell them what you do.
Oh.
I think I turned it off.
That's okay.
Sorry, buddy. Hi.
Right, she rides the bike down to the car and helps us fill up the ice chest. Very important job. We also had Xavier right here. Xavier, you want to come up?
Um.
What do you like doing? For a time.
I, uh, I.
Let's say.
I, I, um, do, I do creams, sugars.
Mm-hmm.
I do the coffee part. And my, and my gun. Oh. I have.
You're right. Do you help deliver?
Yeah.
Yeah, do you want to show them what it looks like? On your end of the job, go ahead and show them what you use to see where we're going and what people are delivering, what people order.
Xavier, those are the folks that you visit and you deliver to? Awesome.
Yeah, what day do you work?
Tuesday.
Tuesdays, because Xavier's actually in science during that time, but we have a little bit of time that we could pull him out. Ethan, come on over here. Ethan's an incredible employee as well, and he also does a lot of different jobs. What would your favorite job?
I like delivering, I, I, I like delivering the drinks and seeing how happy the children.
I bet.
Brownie points and cut.
Oh, yeah.
And then who else on that Tuesday when you're working?
Xavier.
Xavier. And who else?
Is it dog? Is it dog at school? Oh, yeah.
A dog comes along with you? Who's the dog?
Yeah, his name is Frank.
Frank?
Is he a pretty cool dog?
Does he belong to somebody?
Thank Mrs. McQ.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
But Frank's a good dog?
Yeah, so. He's pretty in charge. Go walk him.
Nice, nice.
Well, this is everybody, and we're very, um, very honored to come here. Sorry, my voice is a little shaky. I'm good at talking.
Oh, wow.
Happening, Ed. I do have something to pack out.
So I have a question. Do you do this every day, or it's just certain days?
That's a great question. On Monday, we do orders, and, um, each day goes to different areas in the school, and then, uh, we have three days that we deliver, and that rotates the delivery. Not every student delivers every day. Um, they actually follow an individualized schedule, so dependent upon what their needs are, maybe they deliver one day a week, maybe they deliver three days a week differently, um, depends on the student. Uh, but yeah, so we deliver three days a week, and then on Fridays, we work on vocational things like counting the money, because we use real money, which is really exciting. And then everything that we earn goes back into the business or back into something for the students. So we're excited. Xavier sold shirts, Mr. Shaw mentioned, um, sold shirts just recently. So we're gonna be getting a tie plot and a lot of other really exciting things. Katie, you want to, um, pass out the coupons?
I love their aprons. Those are really sharp.
Yes, we had two different businesses donate materials. Actually, we have, um, they've been bugging me that I had a vinyl sticker to the park for quite a while, and I finally lit a fire under me, and we did find somebody to do that. Uh, so we have a beautiful vinyl sticker, um, on our new card that was purchased this past year, which has been a really nice addition, actually. And I think Sarah's ready to go.
Thank you. Thanks, Katie. Thank you.
Thank you.
So these are coupons. We do deliver, um, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. We are going to the board office, so, uh, Dr. Goggins can give you that information if you'd like to come by on that day, and we'd love for you to be one of our customers.
Oh, super. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Just gonna ask about their trainings, but I think they're right. Thank you, Mr. Shaw.
It's a beautiful, uh, evening. I'm sure they'd rather be.
Okay, um, thank you guys all, um, at this point, and my stuff, my, uh, pre-invitation just, uh, uh, but, uh, just a- as a new principal of LBS, um, what a wonderful group to work with, uh, every single day there. Uh, they bring a ton of energy to our building, and, um, to see if they're out of them, uh, their entire team. So, um, but just as a new principal, some of my goals I wanted to share with you and how those things are going. Um, building relationships with our faculty and students was, was paramount when I got this job, and I think that's going really well. So, and I'll share a little bit more about that in a minute. Um, and then to gain an understanding of, you know, where is LBS, what are some of the standards and protocols and history that they've had? Um, and then also a big thing for me was to, to give our students a voice, and, um, I put on there the Student Advisory Committee, I was saying something new, LBS here, and, um, that's why I have Owen here, and he'll, he'll speak here in one minute, Owen. Um, but Owen's a big part of that committee, and just wanted to explain to you guys what that is and what's going on, so that's. Um, but building relationships with our staff and students, um, one of the reasons why I love working at Westlake is my third year in the district, is our staff loves coming to work. And I, I feel like that's something as principal of the building, uh, that I need to take advantage of every day, and, um, or the culture of our building, um, you can see that by, you know, our, our kids coming into this meeting. Um, but just, you know, my, from a principal's perspective, being visible, being supportive, um, making sure that I have an open door to, uh, all of our staff members, um, and continue the great culture that they already have. I, I didn't have to come in and build that that was there, and, and like I said, it's, it's fun being at a place every day where, where people enjoy it. Uh, thanks. Uh, then goal number two, um, there's a lot of different things going on in middle school, which I learned this year. Uh, we had TV, which is much different for me, uh, a different schedule. Uh, and then again, learning all the different kinds of events that we have, the fun, fun things that we do, such as the kindness run, we're a carnival, our eighth bears will be going to DC here in a few weeks, um, our staff versus students volleyball game, and then of course, uh, our Bernison Brew, uh, with, with Emma. That's just such a big part of our culture, um, a big part of our school, and, um, you know, I, when I came into LBS, I wanted to, to learn about all those things, and then not just, uh, come in and change everything, just, I wanted to learn what they did, and, and, you know, we'll try to enhance things and make things better as we go, and, um, that's been a really, really fun part of the first year. Um, and then goal number three, uh, was to give our students a voice, and this is something that hadn't been done before, before I got there, and, um, it's something that, you know, we also have at the high school, and I think it's really important because, you know, it's not our teacher's building, or my building is the principal, or, you know, it is Board of Education's building, but, um, it's our students. Our students are, are, are important in what they want out of their two years at LBS, so, I think this, this committee that we put together, uh, which Owen will talk about here in a second, but, um, it, it's, it's important because it's, it's their school day, it's, it's their teams, it's their, uh, it's their education, and it's their building. Um, and, you know, one, one picture I'll fill up here, which our, our Student Advisory Committee, a huge part of was designing, uh, what the front of our building is gonna look like here, uh, hopefully by the end of spring, but, um, you know, the entrance of our building, uh, you know, the design, it, it was something, the, the colors, they came up. And I think that's important. It's important for them to have a voice for, uh, things like school spirit or courtyard. Um, one of their goals was adding a sense of community to our school, so, um, without further ado, I will introduce you to one of our members of our Student Advisory Committee. This is Owen Delory, like, eighth grader. He has done a wonderful job of being a part of this, and he is always one that I can count on, uh, to share his opinion and let us know what he thinks. So I wanted to bring him in and, um, you know, let him talk about a little bit of his experience.
Uh, my name is Owen Delory, and I'm the, in the eighth grade. Uh, I'm part of Student Advisory Committee, and it is a pleasure to have, to have the opportunity to be able to speak here today. Uh, Student Advisory consists of seventh and eighth graders, and it is a very diverse room. We have a meeting a quarter, so we have had three meetings. Each meeting is about an hour long, and they're usually eleven fourteen to twelve fourteen, not exact times. Uh, one thing we have talked about was scheduling. Some people, uh, really like the idea of explorer, of our exploratories, but we've been trying to figure out how to expand it, because people who take music or advanced language, they only have classes like art, tech, career connections, two days a week, and this limits their times to focus on things they really want to do besides music or that language. And one thing we were talking about is how to do it, and I, I think the problem is, sorry. Sorry. I think the problem is with being able to pick what explories, exploratories you want to do is you're not prepared for high school, and if you try to pick what you want to do, you may not, uh, really know what you would like to do. Uh, my saying is, passion is like taste buds. They change most times. So if you go in to eighth grade and thinking you really like art, you may come out and not like it as much, and you may want to try something else in high school. So I think that creates a great opportunity. Uh, we also have been talking about how to make the school like a more colorful, full, more energetic place for kids to be more happy in the halls. On our halls of the music room, there is a painting, and we're talking about projects on that. I think that is a great idea. Uh, the fi- the film thing, I also really like that idea. It is a safety thing. You could see out of it, but you can't see into it, which is my opinion, the coolest part. Uh, thank you for having me here. Thank you for having me here today. It was a pleasure speaking.
Thank you.
Owen, you're a wonderful representative of LBS, and, uh, we're very glad you came today.
Yeah.
Oh.
When I talked to him about this, he was like, oh, yeah, yeah, no problem talking to him.
Well, how many students are, um?
So we have approximately twenty students.
Wow.
Um, on, on this committee, and like Owen said, we gave me for an hour, and, uh, we, we discussed different topics that are going into this, you know, on the school, and, you know, it, we try to keep it to, you know, things that are realistic to change. We, we can't say, you know, we're gonna be able to serve Taco Bell at lunch, but, um, you know, things, things that, that, uh, will, will make a better experience for our kids, and they are all, uh, super energetic about it, um, very passionate about, uh, Westlake and the, the experience that they want to have at, at LBS, and even moving on to the high school. Um, you know, because I, I would envision some of our kids, uh, on that committee will be a part of Mr. Williams' high school community, which would be awesome, so. Um, but it's been a great experience so far, definitely something that we will continue to have at LBS, and, you know, hopefully we can, we can even make it a better experience, so.
Could I ask how there's, how they're selected to be on this council?
Sure. So at the beginning of the year, um, it's, it's pretty easy for, um, our eighth grade teachers or to get some opinions on the seventh graders, because they were there for a year. So, uh, what we did this year, we waited almost an entire quarter, uh, or probably six weeks into the school year, so our teachers got to know our students a little bit. Um, and then, you know, I asked each team to give me a certain, uh, number of students that they thought would be good for this committee, um, and give us a, a, a well-rounded representation of our, our student body.
And Owen, remind me, how were you selected to come here tonight to present to us?
You know, I think it's, I think it's straight walk.
Sometimes a little luck is okay, right?
Mr. Shaw, I would be great for this.
I, I agree with him a hundred percent. Good work.
So that's it for, for LBS. Um, I appreciate you guys having us. It's an honor to be here. Uh, thank you to the Board of Education, what you guys do, uh, for our staff and students on a daily basis. We, we appreciate it, and, uh, we're blessed to be a part of this district.
Awesome.
It's always good to see the kids come and, and present something, so, and, and to have like Owen talk, so thank you for, for doing.
They said they would come tonight as long as all of our board members made it for a Bernison Brew session.
You ready to go tomorrow?
You guys all gotta come.
Thank you.
So.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And to, uh, Owen and, and Mr. Shaw, um, please don't feel like you have to, to stay. We appreciate you, uh, coming and visiting us, uh, but it is a gorgeous night. Go take advantage of it. But you're welcome to stay if you'd like to, but I think, I think you guys are going to dinner. Enjoy it. A night without the kids.
Okay, and moving right along, uh, Dr. Goggins, we have your superintendent report.
Thank you. I, I just have a few things I want to touch on. Um, so, uh, you did see the Bernison Brew, and that's, that's a conscious effort that, um, we have going inside the district and providing opportunities to students during the school day. Um, I've told the story about when we were interviewing, uh, Emma McQ for that particular position. Um, she was talking about how she did that in Fairview. When she was with the Fairview Schools, they did a coffee cart kind of thing, and that's right along the line that we were looking to do as well. She's done a great job. Her team has done a great job. Her kids, um, really have stepped up. The Bernison staff has been just so welcoming to it, and, and I think, uh, Mrs. Williams, do you usually get, uh, coffee or a tea, or what's on your list? A Diet Coke for the afternoon? Yeah. There you go. So what's nice, though, is, is those soft skills, like, you know, it could be, uh, taking an order, um, uh, accepting the money, delivering the coffee, or being on the assembly line with, uh, stamping or putting something together, putting the sugar in, pumping the coffee in. So there's a lot of tasks that break down in there. Um, so I really appreciate that, that happening during the school day. Um, the next thing I just want to mention is we are three quarters down. Um, we are three quarters through the school year. Uh, we are in, uh, final quarter of the year. Um, at the end of this week, we'll be entering into our spring break. Now, um, we, we do want everybody to enjoy, um, take, take the time off, and also remember that, uh, we will have that extra day, uh, being off for the eclipse. Um, I, I don't know if it's a reality, but, you know, just kind of watching the news and everything, they're saying how crowded it's gonna be. Like we've said a million times before, it's probably gonna be a cloudy day, and no one's gonna come, but I guess we shall see. I've never experienced something like this before, so maybe, um, it'll much ado about nothing, or maybe this area will be packed with people, and we'll be so thankful that we closed for that day. But I think the other thing that happens, um, when we do have a break, while it's a break for student staff, um, families, there are some staff that it's like when people leave, it's their opportunity to have an empty building. So whether it's cleaning, um, projects, uh, those kind of things, these people assemble really quick, and they know they have a week to get a lot done. Um, two things that are happening, seeing Dr. Zagre here, he's leading an initiative in Dover intermediate school to, uh, replace projectors, boards. Um, they'll get as many of those done as they can, uh, over that break. Uh, Mr. Kosovar, um, we are finally getting our, um, air handlers installed, so we're gonna have, uh, three of the air handlers installed, and they are gonna be here on Friday. Um, so they will, as soon as kids and staff are leaving on, uh, Thursday, workers are showing up on Friday, uh, to get those installed. Um, we haven't, knock on wood, we haven't seen anything in the weather that would prevent or slow down, uh, this installation, uh, but that, that's going in, and we're really, really excited about that. Um, just to mention, those air handlers, uh, were purchased with Esrs funding, um, just another use of that, that, um, uh, we, we did utilize there. Um, with that, I am, I am good with closing your report and answering any questions during my recommendations.
Um, question for you, um, because I know we transport to the non-publics. Are there any buses that are running on the eclipse day that we know of?
That's a good question. I don't think so. Um, we'd have to double check on that. I'm not sure. I hope not. Um, because that was the biggest thing, and actually, Mr. Craft was in the same presentation at Rotary, um, when we went to the Science Center, or the, the Lake Harry Science Center, and they were saying that that's one of the biggest issues, is the traffic, uh, is expected to be just crazy.
Yes.
Um, so hopefully not, but I don't know that for sure.
Oh, thank you.
Yes, the word on the street is be sure you have a full tank of gas a few days before, have three days supply of food, and stay home.
My favorite was a paper map.
Oh, yeah. I'm not just supposed to put something white on the ground because there's gonna be colors and waves or something like a white sheet?
They're just saying cell phone reception might not be the greatest. So have a paper map. That was my favorite one. Like, they still sell paper map?
Got to go to AAA and get a trip tech.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Goggins.
Yep.
Mr. Hopkins' treasures report.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, tonight I don't, do not have a formal, um, report, so I will hold my comments as we go through my recommendations.
Okay, thank you. And that brings us to the hearing of the public. So if there is anyone that wishes to speak, the public may address the board during the periods of the meeting designated for public participation. We, the Board of Education, do not engage in a public debate, and especially do not have a public discussion about individual student situations in this setting. Each person addressing the board should give their name and address. If several people wish to speak, each person is allotted three minutes until the total time allotted is used. During that period, no person may speak twice until all who desire to speak have had the opportunity to do so. The period of public participation may be extended by a voter of the majority of the board present and voting. So if you want to speak, now is the time. And, okay.
Can we guys answer our policy questions?
It's not a, we, you can, you can ask the question, and then we'll respond to you in writing.
So name and address first.
Brian Gibbs, twenty-one fifty Radcliffe. Um, my question is what the policy is about teachers, uh, having power school updated. Because my problem is last quarter and this quarter, my son showed nothing missing until today, which, in my opinion, is after the grading period, and the teacher had responded last quarter saying she had until today to put it in, which doesn't seem right, fair, or whatever you want to call it to me at all.
If you want to stick around, I can talk to you after the meeting. If that, I mean, that, I mean, you can continue to talk. You have time to speak, but.
No, that, that, that's my question is.
Sure.
What the policy is, because she said one thing, and it just didn't sit well with us, and then the same thing happened today, you know, as of Thursday, Friday, last week, he had an A. Today, he's got a C because there's things missing. But we're not missing Thursday, Friday last week, so.
Okay, that's it. No, thank you, Mr. Gibbs.
Anyone else? Okay, um, that brings us to approval of the minutes. Are there any, uh, Okay, um that brings us to approval of the minutes, are there any uh? Additionals or corrections to the minutes? If not, those in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. Okay. And Mister Hopkins, you're back up with treasurer's recommendations.
Thank you again, Madam President, um. Tonight, I I have several recommendations, it's actually broken into two parts and I will try to uh explain. Uh a couple of them that are of significant importance tonight. First one is five A, uh it's a very long resolution, I'm not going to read it uh all by any means, it's available on board docs. And but it's in regards to a uh s- a bond issue of school improvement notes, um. If you recall, and I, and I know three of my board members, I were on the board back in twenty nineteen, I have two newer members who are not, but. Um from twenty nineteen, as we were working through the new elementary school project. Uh the board made the conscious decision to not cut back on square feet. Or cut back on the quality of materials used. Uh square footage, obviously, is square footage, when I talk about materials used, examples would be, uh we opted to. Do LED lights instead of fluorescent lighting, we opted to do aluminum windows instead of aluminum clad wood windows, uh so that things would last longer. In order to do that, we had to uh. Be able to spend a little bit more than what our bond issue for the uh new elementary school was passed uh back in twenty sixteen. Uh we did that in two ways, one part we used a PI funds. And then a second part, we financed a million dollars through what's called manuscript debt. And manuscript debt is essentially uh loaning ourselves the money. So we loaned ourselves money uh by using the bond fund um uh as the loaning agent. And then PI received those funds, uh that million dollars and PI was responsible to pay back those funds. When we structured it, um we structured initially as a five-year bond anticip- bond anticipatory note, a BAN. And that uh that is now coming uh to maturity at this point. Um during the first five years, we had a lot of flexibility, we could pretty much handle it uh the way we wanted to, but. Uh by the direction of the board and our conversations in the finance committee, uh we structured it specifically to be paying back uh uh hundred thousand dollars per year. On April first of each year, and as of today, we've paid back four hundred thousand dollars. And uh this April first, we have our next payment of uh the last of the uh original five hundred thousand dollars for this bond anticipatory note. We knew we would be rolling over, or we would do requests this time, uh rolling over uh to do another five years, carrying that last five hundred thousand dollars. Uh of debt, uh I'm asking the board to approve this tonight. If the board does approve it, uh what will happen is um. The full amount that is due at this point today is six hundred thousand dollars, we would pay that back to the bond um fund. We would also pay interest, um I I forgive me, I don't have the exact number with me. Uh but it's a hundred plus thousand dollars that we owe in interest, okay, that will go into our bond uh fund. By law, any interest payments will uh that go into the bond fund get automatically credited to general fund. At our next board meeting in April, I'm gonna come and ask the board to transfer that exact amount of money from a general fund. Back to PI where it was originally paid for. In essence, we're loaning ourselves money with no interest cost. Cuz it's being paid to us and we're just gonna give it back to PI, assuming the board agrees with all of that. Um in order to keep uh going with our original plan. Uh of doing it over, paying back over ten years, I would need the board to approve these uh bond, uh the bond anticipatory note uh tonight. Uh what happens in a little bit of a quick process of this is uh we work with the county, we uh get information from the county regarding. Uh exactly what a mill generates, we know what it is, roughly one point eight million dollars, because we have debt limitations, we're well within our limitation. But we issue these bonds that are available on uh April first. Um I will sign documentation that uh I will automatically accept all the uh five hundred thousand dollars of the bonds. Again, it's not going to public sale, it's only fin- being financed through our bond fund internally. So I become the owner of the bonds as a treasurer of the school district. And then we pay ourselves back, uh this time by board resolution. It has to be structured under IRS rules and we're following that same structure of a hundred thousand dollars per year. With the interest due at the end of the five years. Again, uh God willing, we're all here in five years, we'll have the same conversation. Uh not in rolling over a bond anticipatory note, but in paying the interest and sending it back to PI. Is there any questions regarding this bond anticipatory note? All right, I have uh in this section of of five, number five treasurer's recommendations, I do have two more uh recommendations. I have some then and now certificates, if you have questions, please let me know. And then I have a purpose statement for our environment environmental, again, if you have questions, please let me know. Uh the second piece I'd like to talk about is my number six treasurer recommendations tax matters. Last year, House Bill one twenty-six was passed and it significantly uh changed the way we're allowed to uh challenge. Uh property valuations, um under uh in in the past, if we felt there was a difference of property value of because of a sale. These are commercial properties, but for argument's sake, tonight I'm gonna talk about a residential property. So if my, if the home I'm looking at is valued at five hundred thousand dollars. And I pay six hundred thousand dollars, okay? The general rule of thumb in valuations is it's pay, it's valued at whatever someone's willing to pay for it. So we would have in the past said, okay, hey, the value went up by twenty percent, we're going to seek. Um a increase in the valuation because the county doesn't catch all of the sales all of the time. Um House Bill one twenty-six has changed the way that we're allowed to do that. Uh now, as you'll see here, it's uh we probably won't be filing very many residential ones. As the new limit is ten percent, increase of ten percent of the property value. Plus five hundred thousand dollars. So on that five hundred thousand dollar home, okay, that I used as an example, would have to sell for over one point zero five million dollars. In order for it to reach that threshold of ten percent plus the five hundred thousand dollars. So we're not gonna see a whole lot, if ever, with residential, but we do see it with commercial property. And our attorney that we work with, David Seed from Brinson McIntyre Seed, uh has identified eight properties. Under the old way of doing it, uh as treasurer, I was able to work with the attorney and uh move forward with uh these challenges. Under the new way, they have to be board approved. Um we are, they each have to be their own resolution, that's why you seek eight different resolutions that I'm uh recommending tonight. Uh they can be combined into one singular vote, but they cannot be combined with anything else. So tonight I'll ask for them to be combined of, I think it's uh six A through H or or whatever, uh forgive me, but um. Well, I'll ask for that combination, but this allows our attorney to move forward with uh an increase in the value. Overall, we don't see this money uh of valuation increases coming directly into our pocket. Uh we do it more so on keeping fairness in the community. If all of my taxpayers are at this table. And Mister Kraft here comes in and buys a property that was valued at a million dollars, but he now pays five million dollars for it, okay? In fairness to everyone else at the table, we should redistribute the pie of how much each of you are paying in taxes. We don't get a huge increase in funds by doing the challenges, but we do uh redistribute the pie. So that the taxpayers are more fairly charged. Any questions about the tax complaints?
So and I was gonna ask how you find out, so it's the attorney that actually identifies these.
So the attorney works uh through um. Uh property sales records, has access to a database, searches property sales records, and then works through to see what their uh uh valuation is, yes.
Okay, do you want five A separate?
So yeah, if it, uh if it's okay with the board, I would be uh, I would love to have five A separate and then combine five B and C. And then as we get into six, I would ask that it would be six A through six H.
Okay. Okay, is there a motion to approve treasurer's recommendation five A?
So moved, second.
Any questions or discussion?
I greatly appreciate you taking the time to explain.
We'll see you in five years.
Yeah, that's.
Want to do it uh as well within the finance.
Anyone else? Okay, roll call, please.
Kraft, yes. Panukin?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Lizinsky?
Yes.
Gerdat?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Okay, is there a motion to approve treasurer's recommendations five B and five C?
So moved.
Second? Any questions or discussion? No, okay, roll call, please.
Panukin?
Yes.
Gerdat?
Yes.
Kraft, yes. Lamb, yes. Lizinsky?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, is there a motion to approve treasurer's recommendations on the tax matters six A through six H?
So moved, second.
Discussion, questions?
I appreciate you taking the time to go through all this with the additional processes.
Yeah, they've made some significant changes, um a- again, we're trying to do what's uh in the best interest of the district and our taxpayers.
And and it's interesting that here I thought we'd be getting a lot of money.
No.
No, we don't profit from it, so.
No, we we get a little bit in the back taxes they might owe from when the sale date of the property, but going forward, it just redistributes. Uh the way the taxes are paid.
Okay, any other? Questions, okay, roll call, please.
Kraft, yes. Panukin?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Lizinsky?
Yes.
Gerdat?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Okay, and that brings us back to you, Doctor.
Sounds good, um would like to read seven A with our gifts and donations, we have two. Um this evening from Breeze Line, uh three Battery March Park in Quincy, Massachusetts. Um uh donated two hundred and fifty dollars, COSI STEM. Uh it it lunchbox kits valued at seventy-five hundred dollars to the second grade classes at Westlake Elementary School, COSI came in. Received donation from Breeze Line, we appreciate them doing that, and the Wilson family, there's Paul Wilson back there. Um donating a foosball table. To the Special Education Department of Westlake High School, so thank you for the donations. Other items that uh I do wanna touch on is letter B, um we do have administrative contract renewals. Um I did invite uh some administrators to come if they want, usually when we're hiring someone. Uh you know, we'll invite them to to meet the board. And uh just think it's nice uh to have a few administrators come in who are being recommended. Number one, just to say thank you for the work that you do in the buildings, we greatly appreciate it, um so uh thanks for doing that. So that's seven B. And other ones that I would want to touch on is kind of going through um. Well, overnight stipends, so two are connected, um letter K and letter O. With K being um uh a resolution to approve stipends for the um. Overnight academic trip for the middle school and letter O is a resolution to approve the actual trip, which is the. Uh Lee Bernison, Washington DC trip that will be happening, um. Other item that I wanted to uh touch on is letter N, which is memorandum memorandum of understanding with WTA. This is in regard to um the sick leave severance, it's uh in the contract that we agreed to. Uh for next year, uh but one of the things we wanted to do is uh extend that to those retiring this year, so. Um they're not sitting back and saying, I should have stayed one more year, can I do this, and so. Um that is, and that was passed by WTA, I think it was. March eleventh, maybe?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so there was that and. And that's about it, and I'll take any questions if you have them, but for me, five, seven, eight. Uh we would typically do separately, but I don't see any issues in combining B through P.
You don't want the contract renewal separate? That can be combined.
Uh it could, there's no, Todd, there's no reason why they can't.
It's not required, it's okay.
If you'd like it to be separate, you can, but uh there's really not a.
Well, I always like it when we hire them to be, for it to be separate.
Then let's do seven A, A and B separate, and then we can.
Go on from there. Okay, is there a resul- uh is there a motion to approve superintendent's recommendation seven A for the gifts and donations?
So moved, second.
Any uh questions or comments, oh, again, we thank uh our very generous. Donors for what they give to the school. Anyone else, okay, roll call, please.
Lamb?
Yes.
Panukin?
Yes.
Kraft?
Yes.
Lizinsky?
Yes.
Gerdat?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, is there a motion to approve superintendent's recommendation seven B, which is the. Administrative contract renewals.
So moved, second.
Any discussion, questions? None, okay, roll call.
Great to see a number of them here tonight, and it's been great to work with everyone. Trolled the same, being renewed.
One question, Mister Ronaldo, is there a score? All right.
Ah, all right. And thank goodness it wasn't raining tonight.
Tomorrow night for softball opener.
Oh.
Sorry, Brad.
There might be a window.
Yeah, look, it'd be nice.
Okay. And we do appreciate uh all of you for the jobs that you do, it's not an easy job anymore, but uh. We're lucky to have you all. Uh roll call, please.
Kraft?
Yes.
Panukin?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Lizinsky?
Yes.
Gerdat?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, is there a motion to approve superintendent's recommendation seven C? Through seven P?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Nope, okay, roll call, please.
Gerdat?
Yes.
Kraft?
Yes.
Panukin?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Lizinsky?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. We come to the second hearing of the public. But Mister Gibbs, you don't wanna get up, okay, once was enough. Okay, um board comments.
I've been attending the Wesley Council PT meetings, um and next month I am not able to attend it, it's on April seventeenth. Um at nine AM. Here, they also do send out a Google Meet, is there somebody who could attend that one?
What day of the week is that?
That's a Wednesday morning, started at nine AM.
Wednesday at nine, and how long do they last?
I usually leave when administrators leave, about within an hour.
Okay.
It's also on Google Meet and they can send out a link.
I could probably attend.
Okay, um also, May fifteenth is the installation luncheon. I don't know the location, but that's usually starts at eleven thirty. Um and Music Alamo is on May fourth for just saving the dates.
Wow. Hard to believe.
It's great to see so many out in the crowd as well as those uh here uh at the table uh at the Derby on Saturday. It was a ride, and thanks everyone for all their hard work.
When do they find out uh how much they?
They usually do have the rough idea. The night of.
My daughter's already with the fourties in that parking spot.
I I was just gonna say, did he, he won the uh the silent auction for the the. The parking spot up close and two years ago, I got that for my granddaughter and it, she'll, she'll love it. You have a lot of fun.
You know what, we played it wrong, I should have held up telling her and giving it to her as a foot.
Oh, well.
When's her birthday?
Yeah. Wow, that was, I was excited for you.
Thankfully, we, we beat up all families.
Yes, I guess, yes, cuz he forgot, in his excitement with his horse, he forgot to go back in bits.
He did.
And and your wife and I were also standing there preventing anything. Okay, um. And we have our uh luncheon and our tour uh over in Lakewood this Wednesday. So who's all? Are you going, Joe?
I am.
Johnny, you can't go, Liz, Liz and I are going, Brad, okay. Um. Any other board comments?
We also had the Dallas or Scholars Basketball Game.
Staff won.
They did.
They dominated the game the whole time, pretty much.
And I think that it would be a great opportunity for the five of us as board members to take the sport next year.
Boy, I would need to start training now.
We'll talk.
Right.
I'll cheer from the sidelines.
Awesome, we'll switch you up, uh we'll.
I can be very loud.
Uh and I'm also looking forward to uh the Drama Club's uh show starting, uh what is it, April eighteenth uh for four days or four nights. So.
We have a special day on Sunday, right, with regard to that?
With the senior Sunday, I believe.
That, that's uh. Dara, I'm gonna be out of, out of town, so I miss it this year.
Same, yeah.
Don't worry, my mom will wrestle up out of King James. Don't worry, my mom will wrestle up all King James books.
Thanks.
Sure.
Good. Dr. Goggan, I, I enjoy behind the W.
Good.
Anything, uh, more you want to tell us about that?
Now it'll be coming out soon.
Okay.
And, and our, uh, Bernison Brew is highlighted, so some of the folks. That if you turn to that page right now, you'll see some of the folks, uh, here tonight and that. Yeah.
Really enjoy it. I would like to throw in, I know I'm, uh, just put out there that, uh, announced that in. April, we're going to be combining our work session and our board meeting and, uh, moving the date to April twenty-ninth. So we'll have one meeting in April and it will be scheduled for April twenty-ninth. And we'll publicly get out a, a public notice later for it.
Thank you.
Okay, oh, with no further comments, we'll move to our board items and we have our first reading of policies, Dr.
Yeah, I'll just touch on it. And, um, so I did send you a summary of each of these as well and, and within there should be the actual. Uh, policy documents. Um. Nothing really substantial in these, um, changes from ODE to DEW. Um, some minor changes based on, uh, different laws passed. Um, but I really. Don't think there was anything, must, I don't know, Liz, if you were going through it, it didn't seem. Anything heavy within those, so.
No, I think it's all pretty, it just updates.
Yeah, so if you just want to take some time and, and read through those, and if you have any questions either. Tonight or, uh, prior to next board meeting, uh, please just let me know and I'd be happy to answer those.
Okay, our next item is to appro, uh, approving. The amendment to the employment contract of our superintendent. And, um. Want me to give details that it's for five years or don't?
Well, yeah, that's fine.
Uh, well, uh, we have. Because we like him and we wanted to stay in Westlake. And, uh. Um. Same thing with, uh, our treasurer. Uh, which is, uh, board item ten C, uh, we've given a five-year contract and, um. Uh. Should I give further details or? Okay, uh, for the last, for the last five, um. For five of the last seven years, they have received no raises at all. Um, so we are extending, uh, two and a half percent raise. Uh, for them, uh, to make them, um. What's the wording of, of sort of equal to the other treasures and superintendents, uh, in, around our area. Because we were lagging way behind. So we're very fortunate to have both Dr. Goggan and Mr. Hopkins and, uh. We hope you stay. Okay, so. Um, do I need, I need a motion for all three of them?
Now, number one is. Yeah, A is.
Okay, so.
Just the first reading, so.
For ten A, ten B and ten C?
Correct, I would ask in this case to him.
Yes, yes. Okay, is there a motion to approve board item ten B? Which is the employment contract of, uh, our superintendent.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, any questions or discussion?
Well, not to speak for everybody, but I think, uh. Most people in the community and, and the board would probably appreciate the recognition that, uh, you rightly deserve. Uh, with the extension of this contract. I remember when you came on the board, it was not in the most, uh. Hospitable of times between, uh, staff and, uh. And the board administration, but you came in and, uh, did a great job, wrestled through that, wrestled through COVID. Um. On a number of smaller things over, over the years as well that you tackled. Um, not to the point where we're ever on TV somewhere. So, um. I give you tons of credit to be able to keep us focused at times. Um, and then also making sure that suits for all these ones that better come first, so.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And, uh, this, uh, going along with that, I think Mr. Hopkins has done a terrific job.
Oh, yeah, Todd. We didn't get, we didn't get.
Oh, sorry, I'm ahead of myself. Okay, um. Anyone else want to comment? I'm looking forward to working with you for a few more years.
Absolutely.
It's been a great, uh, three months.
Okay, roll call, please.
Craft?
Yes.
Benukin?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Lizinsky?
Yes.
Girdon?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, is there a motion to approve board item ten C, which is the, uh, employment contract of. Our CFO treasurer, Mr. Hopkins.
So moved, second.
Okay, now discussion and comments.
You were saying, Madam President?
Yes, that I think Mr. Hopkins has done a great job handling our finances.
Now, would you echo my previous comments that it's been a wonderful three months? And forward to the next four years.
I, I would say as well, Mr. Hopkins came on board not long after, uh, Dr. Goggan.
Same time.
Uh, so having two different. Uh. Key administrators coming into a district at relatively the same time. Um, not really knowing each other, um. The couple have worked very well together. So. They, I think they feed off of each other to keep each other honest. Uh, there's obviously banter there. Uh, but at the end of the day, uh, both have staffs that I think respect them and they respect them as well. Mr. Hopkins, uh, has been very good about sharing any and all, uh, financial information. With, um, Mr. Craft and I, and then even before Joe, uh, as well. I mean, it's, it's been, uh. It's been a good relationship with the district, uh, associated with Mr. Hopkins being here, so good to see you.
Thank you.
Extend that agreement for another five years.
I look forward to it.
I think it should also be noted that not only through COVID in the last four years, but you had a building project, getting the, uh. The bond pass. Getting the project done, the land deal and consolidating four elementary schools. I mean, that's a pretty massive task. You know, on top of COVID and everything else.
And turfing the football field and the baseball signs, right? We've had a lot, a lot of projects, yeah.
I see.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, roll call, please.
Craft?
Yes.
Benukin?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Lizinsky?
Yes.
Girdon?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, is there a motion? To adjourn to executive session? To prepare for. Conducting or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with employees. And the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion or compensation of an employee or official.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, roll call, please.
To adjourn into executive session at six fifty-eight PM? Craft?
Yes.
Girdon?
Yes.
Benukin?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Lizinsky?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And there will be no action taken.
Ooh, demons win three, two. All right.
Really?
Yeah.
All right.
It's the first game ever on the field and it's a win.
Good win.
Nice. Big win.